Welcome to 1990 Miss Penethley Contest. It's 13 consecutive years now that the West End Centre has held this contest, and this is the third year that it has been sponsored by the Penethley Star. We've now got a record entry, I think, of local girls this year. Twenty-four excited young ladies are standing backstage waiting to be presented. The stage is set, the boys on the lights are standing by. We've sold all the tickets, a few are outside so the lucky ones are in here tonight. And we are made honoured to have among the distinguished members of the audience, the mayor and mayoress of the Borough of Penethley, councillor and Mrs Dennis McDonagh. So a big brunt of applause. And also the editor, I don't know whether he has good manners with him, of the Penethley Star, Mr Spencer Feeney. We're honoured to say English here because the Borough Council is presenting the stunning show, and the Penethley Star, and the advertisers have provided the most wonderful sponsorship and prizes. Let me just tell you some of the prizes, you may know them anyway. They've come from Bailey, from the Diplomat, from Marks and Spencer, from Price's, from Bits and Vobs, Lakefield Electrical, Uptown, Howard and Palmer, Tavola Sosburn, Grasshopper, the Hairwork Shop, and of course this most wonderful first prize of... It took to Paris for two weekends, and Paris was presented by Howman's House, so we couldn't do better. We couldn't do better than entering for this world contest because I think the winner is one of the marvellous times. Well now, may I now introduce you to the judges who will have a very tough job on their hat, of course, with twenty-four lovely girls to select, first taken from. So the judges tonight, in no particular order, but why shouldn't we start off with the famous Scarlet and Welsh international right-winger, the daughter, Yaya Nevin. This is just the beginning of the show, we've got some jobs in our hair. We may have a big audience prop forwards, I think. And to sort the thing down just a little, we have last year's holder and still holding the title to this moment, Miss Penethley 1989, Louise Hodgens. We've now got a record entry, I think, of local girls this year. Twenty-four excited young ladies are standing backstage waiting to be presented. The stage is set, the boys on the lights are standing by. We've sold all the tickets, a few are outside so the lucky ones are in here tonight. And we are made honoured to have among the distinguished members of the audience, the mayor and mayoress of the Borough of Penethley, councillor and Mrs Dennis McDonagh. So a big brunt of applause. And also the editor, I don't know whether he has good manners with him, of the Penethley Star, Mr Spencer Feeney. We're honoured to say English here because the Borough Council is presenting the stunning show, and the Penethley Star, and the advertisers have provided the most wonderful sponsorship and prizes. Let me just tell you some of the prizes, you may know them anyway. They've come from Bailey, from the Diplomat, from Marks and Spencer, from Price's, from Bits and Vobs, Lakefield Electrical, Uptown, Howard and Palmer, Tavola Sosburn, Grasshopper, the Hairwork Shop, and of course this most wonderful first prize of... It took to Paris for two weekends, and Paris was presented by Howman's House, so we couldn't do better. We couldn't do better than entering for this world contest because I think the winner is one of the marvellous times. Well now, may I now introduce you to the judges who will have a very tough job on their hat, of course, with twenty-four lovely girls to select, first taken from. So the judges tonight, in no particular order, but why shouldn't we start off with the famous Scarlet and Welsh international right-winger, the daughter, Yaya Nevin. This is just the beginning of the show, we've got some jobs in our hair. We may have a big audience prop forwards, I think. And to sort the thing down just a little, we have last year's holder and still holding the title to this moment, Miss Penethley 1989, Louise Hodgens. The vice-chairman, Vice-Deputy Chairman, Vice-Chairman of the Recreation Committee, marvellous friend of the entertainment centre, Councillor Roy Cosnick. And the Deputy Mayor of the Borough, Councillor Dylan Bowen. And to see fair play and to be excused here, Chairman of the panel, your one and only, clever manager, Joe Phillips. Right, well I'd love to, if you would pardon us, escort the panel of judges to their seats. And just to remind you, some of the other people who I believe are present here tonight, I don't know whether Diane Cass is here, she was the original winner in 1978. And I do know that Dennis Williams, who was the first winner of the contest in 19... Where are we now? Three years ago, when the, um, when the star took the contest over. But now enough of me, because now what you will want is to see the girls, and they will be appearing now in the day wear parade. May I now ask you to give a very warm welcome to the presenter of this section of the contest, Ina Taylor.
Thank you, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, isn't this exciting? Another year and another contest, you know, it really is exciting coming onto a stage. I know a lot of people are nervous, but you know, the whole day is a build-up to the excitement. And it starts off, perhaps a week or more ago, with the stage crew setting this stage, building it and setting it, and isn't it beautiful? Unrelenting crew, sat up there. The sound crew, and everybody is working away in the afternoon. The band arrives, and they sit, and they have a little band call. And the girls come, and they start to rehearse, and everybody is heading out and excited. But for me, it's always just that moment before the curtain goes up, when you're standing in the wings, and a gentleman is standing there with his earphones, and he's talking to the front of the house, and to the lighting and sound, and he says, "Ready? Curtain up." So ladies and gentlemen, we are curtain up, and tonight you want to see the girls, and we have twenty-four local girls, isn't that wonderful? Now, a lot of the girls have not been into a contest before, and they're very nervous. They're standing at their same old shanties. So will you please, every single girl that comes on, will you give her a wonderful reception? Right, we're going to start with first girl, who is Nikki Gleam, number one. Nikki. Nikki is a twin-time student, she comes from Lake Osverly. And she's wearing very casual, very rare jewellery. Lovely for summer, if I may, we get a little bit more sun, but I'm sure we will as time goes on. Welcome Nikki Gleam. Number two is Lisa Coyle. Now Lisa is a sales assistant, and she comes from Penethley. Again, a young lady who's hoping for the sun with a very low cap dress on the back. Lisa's home business, moving. Number three, the number three is Sharon Grant. It's a nice surprise. It is lovely, summery, casual wear that the girls are wearing tonight. She likes horse riding and jet skiing. Sharon Grant. Number four is Rhian Hawkes. Rhian, number four. Rhian also comes from Merg, Penethley, and she's a marine operator. She's twenty-nine, she's wearing a lovely summer dress, white shoes. Her hobbies are knitting, sewing. Number five, ladies and gentlemen, is Wendy Hinder. Wendy is from Merg, Penethley, she's a housewife, sorry to say, but she's a housewife. Number six is Pauline Quinterney. Pauline is from Kidwellie. She likes swimming, squash, riding, and is a manageress. Dressed very, in a very smart, white suit. Number seven is Deborah Lewis. Deborah is from Marks and Penethley, we have another house, all right? Deborah Lewis. Number eight is Lisa Cunningham. Number nine is Sarah. It's a lovely blue off-the-shelf, a summer dress. Isn't it nice to see summer clothes even in this rain? Twenty-two years of age, Linda Cottsonigan, number nine, she is a... Her is from Penethley, is a housewife, lots of housewives, I think. She likes reading, music, and theatre, that's nice. And she wants to be successful with secondary school, I think. Number ten is Deborah Clark. Deborah is a furnace in Penethley, has a hotel receptionist. A very smart, black, white shoes. Deborah, is a CUV radio enthusiast, and she enjoys playing professional soccer. Deborah Clark. Number eleven, Claire Evans. Claire is from Penethley, she's twenty-five, and she's a housewife. Claire is a boss, woman, she likes horse riding. Number twelve is April Groves. April's from the Brits, Penethley, another housewife, another... April likes swimming, buying clothes, and I must say, it's a very nice outfit, it's a lovely outfit, one of my favourites. Lake Wood Groves. Number thirteen is Maddie Sherwood. Maddie, who's twenty-one, is from Merg, Penethley. This time it's navy and white, it's a very lovely silk dress there. Her hobbies are squash, outdoor sports, and... Maddie Sherwood. Number fourteen, ladies and gentlemen, is Tracy Madderin. Tracy, who's seventeen years old. She comes from Hendy, and she likes dancing, amateur dramatics, and singing. She's wearing a very smart peach outfit. Number fifteen is Susan Bones. Susan is twenty-one, she comes from Penethley, and she's a part-time clerk. So it's a very, very ecchie dress, like fine spots from the lovely little wall on Owen Park. Very smart indeed, and her hobbies is cycling, aerobics, modelling, keep fit. Should be very fit after that. Number sixteen, we have Bree Davis. Bree is just twenty, and she's from Port Henry. She's got a very nice paisley suit, I think you'll find it shorts at the top. She's a bit so... Number seventeen, Bree Davis. Number seventeen is Laura Davis. Laura is from Davon, she's nice feet, she's also a student. One of her hobbies is laundry and scarves. Number eighteen, ladies and gentlemen, is Susan Luttwen. Susan is from Port Maris, and she's a trimmer, sounds very interesting. She's got a very nice patterned dress. Her hobbies are aerobics, cooking, and yoga. Susan Luttwen. Number nineteen, we have Julie Darling. Julie is a shop assistant from Kidwellie, a lady of black, very nice elegant black dress. Her hobbies are eating and dancing. Number twenty is Alyssa Rayn. Alyssa is from Penethley, and I think somebody in the audience knows her. Alyssa is twenty-one. She's a natural painter, and she also likes horse riding. Number twenty-one. Sarah is from Davon, and somebody in the audience also knows Sarah. Sarah is a good lady, very nice. Number twenty-two is Angela Davis. Angela from Plagom is a horse breeder, a navy white, she's very smart indeed. But her hobbies, of course, are reading, poetry. Getting near the head now, ladies and gentlemen, number twenty-three, Elizabeth Evans. Elizabeth, wearing a very nice black and white suit, is twenty-three years old, and is also from Penethley, is a part-time sales assistant. Elizabeth, wow, Elizabeth. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we come to the last contestant of the evening, Alison from Greffins. Alison from Penethley, is twenty-one years old. Wearing a very nice paisley blouse. She's a computer telephoneist. Alison. Well that, ladies and gentlemen, completes our line up for this evening, so I will hand you back to John, who will take over, please, thank you.
Well, Ina, while the girls change now into their evening wear, it's my very great pleasure to welcome back to this theatre, people who have entertained us here before, famously, Ed Bronson's team, and their leader is John Burke, the music director of the band. So welcome to Captain Q Music and the cavalry time with Jeff and Andy.
I remember where I was young, being silly, had so much fun. Holding hands and screaming songs, and an uncle jelly and a place of my own. With the biggest stick I ever got, was doing a thing called the crocodile ride. While the old kids rocked them out of bed. We were hopping about until the crocodile ran away. Brown, black, it was all the shine, could you feel the strength keep still? Never knew me a better time, and I guess I never will. Now the marmot was Friday nights, when Tuesday wore her dresses high. Brown, black, it was out, out of sight, yeah. Come on, sing. Love that. Again. This way I am running outside, soon as you ever left, I was a foreign guy. Long hard times, by the record machine, dreaming of the cherry and the overalls. Tears, but I never got the through it guy. But do nothing for the crocodile ride, while they roll the kitchen like a man of fire. We were hopping about until the crocodile ran away. Brown, black, it was all the shine, could you feel the strength keep still? I never knew me a better time, and I guess I never will. Now the marmot was Friday nights, when Tuesday wore her dresses high. Brown, black, it was out, out of sight, yeah. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Andy on stage, my good friend Andy. He's going to do a couple of Anthony Brothers songs here. Bye-bye love, bye-bye happiness. Hello, yes, I think I'm gonna cry. Bye-bye love, bye-bye secrets. Hello, yes, I feel like I could die. Bye-bye love, bye. There goes my baby with someone new. She sure looks happy, I sure act blue. She was my baby till he stepped in. Goodbye to romance that might have been. Bye-bye love, bye-bye happiness. Hello, yes, I think I'm gonna cry. Bye-bye love, bye-bye secrets. Hello, yes, I feel like I could die. Bye-bye love, bye. Walked through with romance, I'm through with love. I'm through with counting the stars and moon. And here's the reason why I'm so free. My lovely baby, this could be me. All together. Bye-bye love, bye-bye happiness. Hello, yes, I think I'm gonna cry. Bye-bye love, bye-bye secrets. Hello, yes, I feel like I could die. Bye-bye love, bye. Wake up, little Susie, wake up. Wake up, little Susie, wake up. We both fell asleep, wake up, little Susie, and we. The movie's over, it's gonna fall and we're in trouble deep. Wake up, little Susie, wake up, little Susie. Well, what are you gonna tell your mother? What are you gonna tell your father? What are you gonna tell our friends when they say, "Ooh la la"? Wake up, little Susie, wake up, little Susie. Well, we told your mother that we'd be invited. Wake up, Susie, baby, looks like we've moved in. Wake up, little Susie, wake up, little Susie. We're not alone. Wake up, little Susie, wake up. Wake up, little Susie, wake up. The movie was so hot, it didn't have much of light. We fell asleep, I could see it's good. Our reputation is shot. Wake up, little Susie, wake up, little Susie. Well, what are you gonna tell your mother? What are you gonna tell your father? What are you gonna tell our friends when they say, "Ooh la la"? Wake up, little Susie, wake up, little Susie. Bye-bye love, bye-bye happiness. Hello, yes, I think I'm gonna cry. Bye-bye love, bye-bye secrets. Hello, yes, I feel like I could die. Bye-bye love, bye. Thank you. Right. This next one is a lovely one, though. By Christopher, it's somebody called That Lady in Red. I've never seen you look as alone as you do tonight. No, I've never seen you shine so bright. And I've never seen so many men ask you if you want to dance, looking for a little romance. Give them half a chance. I have never seen that dress you're wearing. Or the highlight in your hair that catch your eyes. I have been blind, baby in red. Dancing with me, trying to change. There's nobody here. Just you and me is where I wanna be. Why hard to know? This beauty by myself. Never will forget the way you look tonight. I've never seen you looking so gorgeous as you do tonight. No, I've never seen you shine so bright. You're amazing. And I've never seen so many people wanna be there by your side. When you turn to me and smile, into my breath away. I have never had such a feeling. Such a feeling I've completed my love as I do tonight. My lady in red. Dancing with me, trying to change. There's nobody here. Just you and me is where I wanna be. Why hard to know? This beauty by myself. Never will forget the way you look tonight. Never will forget the way you look tonight. My lady in red. Lady in red. Just for my lady. Thank you very much. Praise you, my lady. Thanks.
Wonderful Captain Q, come back again and show, brilliant, okay? Now, we come to that stage where the girls, I believe, have time to change. Yes, the word is that they are now ready in their evening wear. So, open again to the list of answers to Julia Morley, Eina.
Are you enjoying it? Are the girls all pleased today? Push on again, never mind. Come and get on. Right, I'm going to call all the girls back. And you'll see them this time in all their gorgeous fine dress. So here we go. Number one, Nikki Blade. Nikki is in black and she has a lovely blonde hair. She's only seventeen. Student. She wants to be happy and successful. Lisa Poyet. Now we have a dark-haired lady in dress, all in black. Susan, a sales assistant, is only eighteen and a half. She wants to be successful and have a happy life. Lisa Poyet. Number three, Sharon Mills. Sharon is twenty-two. Another Lady of Black, oh, goodness. She has a lovely skirt on and dress. She wears it very nicely. Now we love to open our own desk. Number four is Rhian Thomas. Rhian's in black and gold this time in the traditional long elegant evening dress. How nice to know her. Rhian, as a machine operator, would like to open her own fly clothes design business. Well, if there anything like her brand, she'll be very successful. Number five, Wendy Hindon. Wendy has longed white. How nice she looks in white, very summery, very fresh and elegant. Such a pretty blouse in embroidery and lace. Wendy's ambition is to be a photo or clothing model. But she's something else bigger. Wendy. Number six, Pauline Winkley. Pauline is wearing the most elegant dress, black and gold. It's nothing better than her lovely blonde hair. Pauline, hot story, hot talk. Mr. Douglas said, "Hot talk". Number seven, Deborah Lewis. Deborah is in grey. Lovely silky grey dress. And her ambition, ladies and gentlemen, is to be a singer. Deborah Lewis. Just a coming in this next summer. Deborah's wearing a short white dress. She's twenty-two and she wants to complete an O N D in business studies. I'm sure she will. A lovely girl in evening dress. Linda Cavan. Number nine, Rose Marie Donnelly. Now we have black match with pink. Again, it's a much more traditional evening dress. Now with the ankles and it's lovely. And Rose Marie wishes to be successful with secretarial studies. Rose Marie Donnelly. Number ten, Deborah Clark. Deborah is also in black. It's a very nice lace detail. How lovely. That's good. And Deborah is a hotel receptionist and she wants to be successful in that career. Number eleven, Claire Adams. Claire's also in very elegant black and red and black lace dress. As I said before, today is a housewife and her hobbies are horse riding. Ambition is to be happy and successful. April Rose is contestant number twelve. Last second lady in colour, the same name. It's a very nice dress. Now April is a housewife, she likes swimming, she likes buying clothes, and her ambition is to be a model. I don't see why she shouldn't be. She looks very elegant. April Rose. Mary Sherlock. Mary, twenty-one, receptionist. She's in a very, very smart and black velvet dress. I think it's the first velvet we've seen this evening. It looks lovely. She likes squash, outdoor sports, and her ambition is to have a successful career. Number thirteen, Mary Sherlock. Number fourteen, Tracy Mannering. Tracy is very supreme. Very strong of a shoulder dress. It looks very elegant indeed. She likes dancing, amateur dramatics, singing. And she wants to be an air hostess and she wants to sing on opportunity not. Well, Mary won't know. Number fifteen, Susan Bowles. There I say, the scarlet lady. There's a fine dress she has, such a magnificent, strong colour. Susan is part-time clerk, she likes cycling, aerobics, modelling, feet fit, and she wishes the force to take her modelling as a profession. Susan Bowles. Number sixteen is Maria Davis. Now Maria has a lovely colour suit though. It is one of my favourite colours, it's beautiful and powerful. And she looks very, very nice in it. Susan and Maria also like swimming and singing. And she wants to be a successful singer. Well, this is the land of song, isn't it? Now we come to Laura Davis. Laura is nineteen, she's a student. She likes watching the Scarlets, as I said before, but she also likes keeping fit, swimming and holidays. Oh, we all like holidays. She's in a beautiful, good navy and white spotted suit. Laura Davis. Sula, which is number eighteen. Sue Lauch which is number eighteen. Sue is in black. A rather sort of Turkish trimmings to her dress, very elegant indeed. I like the back panel of lace, it's a very smart dress so. And her ambition is to drive a Ferrari, well. Number nineteen is Julie Garland. Well Julie has a very elegant gold dress, gold plait, which is always very nice, always looks so smart. Julie wants to go stateside, I take it that's welcome. Well, I hope she gets it. Number twenty is Alyssa Sandler. Your friends again. Alyssa is in a black and white trouser suit, which of course can be all free in wear these days, very smart indeed in clothes. She is productionist operator and she likes horse riding and cycling for her, her ambition is to be a professional graphic model. Number twenty-one is Sarah Bentley. Sarah is a dinner lady, I like that. She's got a very nice jacket over a short evening dress, which looks very, very nice. Casual but very smart and her ambition is to do a parachute job. Be happy, be good heart. Number twenty-two Angela Davis. Well Angela is wearing a lovely black evening dress with silver that, I think that's very, very nice indeed. She brings horses and she wants to go on being a successful, with showing horses. I wonder if she's ever going to meet that big a darling. Number twenty-three Elizabeth Evans. Elizabeth is twenty-three, it's a black and you'll notice the under sleeve, there's a lovely gold leaf detail. Probably the horse riding in that. Elizabeth also wants to be hot. And our final contestant is Alison Brooks. Alison trousers suit, lily, beautiful color. She's a computer telepathist, I don't know if you had computer telepathists. And she wants to be happy and she wants to win tonight. Well, who knows? Well you've seen the ladies in their evening wear and I know you want to see them again, don't you? Yes, you do, don't you? Yes, right. I'll call it off. So our first contestant please, Nikki Gleed, number one. Please apply number two. Number three Sharon Jones. Number four Rhian Thomas. Number five Wendy Hindon. Number six Pauline Whately. Number seven Deborah Lewis. Number eight Linda Cunningham. Number nine Rose Marie Donnelly. Number ten Zev Plaugh. Number eleven Claire Evans. Number twelve April Rose. Number thirteen Mary Sherlock. Number fourteen Tracy Mannering. Sixteen Maria Davis. Number seventeen Laura Davis. Eighteen Sue Lauch which. Nineteen Julie Darling. Twenty-two Alison Sandler. Number three Sarah Benson. Number four Angela Davis. Twenty-three Elizabeth Evans. Twenty-four Alison Griffiths. My ladies and gentlemen, that's the contestants for this evening and there are lovely, lovely lot of ladies and they're very nice too. We've had great fun at that stage, this is the last time that you're going to see them all together this evening. There'll be an interval and then you will see a final lineup of seven before the judges pick their one, two, three. So please give them all a very, very big clap.
Well Eder's really said it all for me, but the man, the question there, is so delighted with the beauty and the courage, courage of the state, it's love. And he's asked if each one will accept a bottle of Viva Fatale, but no one will be able to. Thank you Mr. Mayor, we went along the stage, we're going to see, the state president asked us and he will arrange to give you a bottle. I'll give this to anybody who asks me later, you know. In the meanwhile, I'm going to ask the judges that they would be very kind now to go to a room where they've got the tough job of deciding, do the seven girls believe that I should interview in the second half of the programme? I must, I must very much thank Eder, Auntie Eder who was drilling these girls for a couple of hours before the show and they worked on this well. Thank you Eder, thank you girls and we'll see you after the end. Well I've got a list with me now of seven names and I'm hoping that the girls have just been told now who they are, who they're going to be. So I'm just going to try if I can to remember a comic story. I'm just remembering this chap who was sprinkling a lot of white stuff all over his lawn home. And his wife came out, a total dogging old chap, she says, what on earth are you doing that for? He said, I put this on here to keep the elephants off the lawn. But she said, there's no elephant for at least three miles, three thousand miles of here. He said, yes, it's absolutely wonderful stuff, isn't it? I wasn't planning to tell her anyway. No, I am interested in gardening, I do sprinkle stuff on it, it doesn't stop the grass drag, it makes the weeds back. Anyway, now I'll be ready, nowhere near ready yet. Now again you see it reminds me of another show actually. And he was being invited to give an after dinner speech to the chaps of his battalion. But he went there, when he got there, he turned to the waiter and said, look, I usually tell a funny story when I make a speech to that. And I don't know one, do you though? And he said, well, so I know a conundrum. He pulled a photo out of his pocket and said, don't listen to this one, brothers and sisters, that I'm none, but this man's father is my father's son, who is it? The captain, dash, yeah, I don't know who that is, it's very complicated, it's a mystery. He said, well, it's wrong just to tell right now, this man's father is my father's son, it may sound. Oh, she's just astonishing. Well, I've never looked for it, excellent, I'll try that on the land. So a dinner took place, the captain of the army made his speech and said, well that, I'm now getting, I knew that I'd tell a funny story, but I'm going to clunge it. So now I should have a photo with me. Imagine I've got a photo and I'm, now listen to this very carefully, brothers and sisters, have I none, but this man's father is my father's son, now who is it? So a bright lieutenant stood up in the front row and said, excuse us, it's you sir. He said, that's the young young man, it's that waiter fellow over there. No, I'm ready now. Good, well folks, we now get to that stage of the programme. I believe now there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine girls who I'm going to do on stage. So I'm going to ask the girls to come over here, I just come here and here and see them. So the first one to be interviewed is number one Nikki Gleed. Nikki Gleed, now you're a full-time student I believe.
Yeah.
And your hobbies are, tell me about your hobbies, music, dancing and fashion?
Yes, I am, I'm interested in fashion a lot and I like to go out and enjoy myself basically and.
Where do you like to go when you enjoy yourself?
Uh, where do I like to go?
At the taste of the water everywhere you enjoy yourself.
There's various places, everywhere to socialize with everybody and have fun.
Good, now if you were successful and wanted a title of Mr. Messe, are there any things that you would like to suggest as you have a certain mother interest? Anything you'd like that's in the town that isn't here or something that's, any suggestions you would like to say?
To move, where I live is country village, it's a small village and I'd like to have somewhere for the youngsters because there's nowhere for anyone to go. And it's pretty boring, you have to go to town, I'd love somewhere for everybody to go and socialize at night.
Well thank you very much Nikki, we've got some passion from there. And next one on the shortlist of nine is number six Pauline Watworth. Now Pauline, you're a manageress, tell me more about what's the management you're doing.
I work for Cat Lake Company and I do sales and manage the office and there's a group of staff.
How many staff have you got?
I can only say.
Three, are there males or female?
Uh, two males and a female.
And how do the males protect, have been bossed by such a good looking lady or something?
I think they enjoy it.
Yes, I think I would, well even then, your hobbies are swimming, squash, lighting and socializing, tell us about swimming.
Um, well it's something I've kept up since school, I've never done it professionally, but it's just keep fit, it's something I enjoy. And I love sport, I'm a little bit lazy, but swimming, the same pool all day.
Can you do the proper crawl kick?
Yes, that's my favorite stroke.
I've never been allowed to do that, I do that on the scissor kick, I'm pretty strong. The squash, though?
I just do the squash and I've had a few baldy students in memory. They don't play with me anymore. It's playing with my friends and I can do it in the face of the law.
She looks such a nice girl, doesn't she, wouldn't you?
Somebody's been to us, she was on screaming campaign and I was doing dying play on the floor laughing.
Well now then. Well I'm asking everybody, well I've seen one where in your own company, but have you any thoughts, you know, I'm not quite sure, where do you live?
I'm from Goodwood.
Goodwood, um, are there any things that you would like if you win the titles, let's say, that you'd like to enjoy this town or the town in any way?
Well, I think there's an optimism in clarity for teenagers, they tend to opt for Swansea or Cardiff. I'm a bit of a sports fanatic myself, I think I'd like to see ice drinking, thank you.
Right, well there we are, thank you very much. And now we've called on number eight Linda Cunningham. Now Linda, you're a sales supervisor, can you tell me what that's all about?
I supervise my staff in the company work for his town, choosing Swansea.
Yes.
Just looking after the staff and making me do the job right.
And what are the, what are the products themselves? Shoes?
Yes.
Oh yes. Do you have to measure people's feet up and that sort of thing?
That's right, yeah, a lot of children's.
Who are the most important to measure?
Children.
Children.
Yes.
I thought it would be, because they're always tidgeting, aren't they? You have hobbies, very interesting hobbies, photography and walking and cycling. What about photography?
I do it almost every time and try to combine walking and photography together. And basically I just go out with time to take photographs.
Very good, and have you ever shown the photographs anywhere, have you been in competition?
No, I just do it, enjoy the beauty, about imprinting them.
Very nice, and did you earn a contract?
I used to put a technical, yeah.
Very good, well I'm asking, I see that you want to complete your O N D, isn't it, what does O N D stand for?
Ordinary National Department.
Oh yes. Now if you win this title automatically, is there anything special that you'd like, well you have a bit of influence there in Britain, that you'd like to urge, was added to our community's improvements or whatever?
I come from Surrey, which is not much like the instance, it's really, that's really new, it's more than the instance to do that.
So you recommend sports services in your town or yours?
Yes.
Linda Cunningham, thank you very much. Now I call on number eleven Claire Evans. Claire, I should question you. Uh, Claire, you're a housewife. Have you any children?
Yes, three girls.
How many?
Three.
Three, I wonder maybe a little bit. How old are they?
Age six, she's eighteen years.
Well.
Age three, she's eighteen, I'm a little bit strange, she's born on Christmas Day.
She's got two sisters born on Christmas Day, and they're all very interesting, right? And they're all very interesting, my father died on the Friday, Merry Christmas. No, I don't know. Your hobbies are for Friday?
Well, I like horse trading, I read Mrs. Best. I exercise, she's studying, she has.
She has.
I also like athletics.
You love athletics.
Some kind of. I would like to see an athletics club, we can have here women's, but it's not as yet. I would like to get back.
There's a lot of, we've got a very good athletic.
Men's athletic.
But what, well, the additional facilities you would look for would be more facilities for athletics in National Department?
Yes, and athletics, women's team.
And a swimming team as well?
Uh, no, athletics.
Women, I'm sorry, women.
Women.
Yes, I've heard of the world, anyway, I think that's a wonderful recommendation. So if you are successful in trying, maybe adding people who are talented, go for more athletic, thank you very much, Claire Evans. I'm lucky for some, luck is right, number thirteen, Lenny Sherrill. Lenny, you're a receptionist.
Right.
Who do you receive, what sort of business is this?
Typically, it's an asthema.
Double brazer? What are the advantages of double brazer? I don't know, do you find that it is easy things to sell or hard sell?
I don't know, I just work in the office.
You just work in the office and you leave others to... So people come in and say, "I'm desperate to get double brazer done because I don't know anywhere I could get that," do you?
I just recruit them to sell.
Now, your hobbies are squash and outdoor sports and social, you tell me about squash.
I play every Monday.
Do you, yes.
We've got a team.
Where do you play?
Um, we play on the pitch.
Is it a good place, Lenny?
Yes, I think it might.
Are you there, yes? And outdoor sports, what do you do there?
Um, actually, I have a women's surfing, not successful, but I play.
Women's surfing, do they do that on the country level or?
No, I've got the third option.
Yes. Well, it always looks very, very tricky to me. You're good swim, are you?
Um, I used to swim, I can do it.
Yes, you still?
Yes.
Are you tired?
Yes.
Although, if you win the title, you have a certain amount of things to do. Are there any things, anything that you would like to suggest as you think to Mr. National?
Well, recently, a lot of them have visited, I just don't know, how long has I seen them?
Yes.
Maybe change the hospital to my hospital.
Now we have number fourteen, Tracy Marie Mayland. Tracy, you're a student.
Yes.
Why do you stand there?
Because I need to be a holiday representative from there, after two weeks' training.
Wonderful, where are you doing that?
In Swansea College, T校.
Lovely, are you in a couple of person? And now, dancing. I make sure something's got to work, why? Yes, the half has been found, I'm trying to take life and bring you like this, it's a thing. Now, your hobbies are dancing and amateur dramatics, now tell me a little bit about amateur dramatics.
It's part of our college, would you show your...
Yes.
And I did cabaret in nineteen eighty-eight.
The Brecht thing?
Sorry.
Is it called Brecht, you know, Brecht, cabaret?
Yes, cabaret, the musical, yes. And then last year, no, it was this year, sorry, in March, I did quite a same story. And I only did it for two nights, I wrote two livings.
Oh, dear. And you do jump off the...
I jumped off the stage.
Well, you weren't too likely to get that, were you? Well, you jumped off the, you were so keen to get down.
That's right.
But your ambition's been ahead. Hello.
Eighteen.
You're looking very young.
No, I'm not, I can't remember.
Well, ambition's been ahead, somebody, if you can't, they better start, they're jumping off the stage. And you sing, I love protecting rocks, you like singing?
I love to, yeah, I don't sing in shows, I love to.
Well, I'm looking forward to hearing you sing on the stage.
No way. No way.
Not tonight. What I will ask you tonight, because in the event of you winning the title of Mr. National, you would be a young lady of some influence in town and you can have a view. If you could have any suggestions for improvement or anything at all, what would you recommend?
Well, recently, something broke into my car, it's still on the radio on the camera, things like that. And I think nobody cares for society no more, I'd like more done in my purchase. And this is a brilliant way to live then, so let's get on, please.
Bonbon. Sometimes I'm trying, I hope there won't be any pressure about serving. And now it's my pleasure to call upon number seventeen, Laura Louise Davis. Laura Louise, nineteen years of age and you're a student.
Yes, that's right.
Tell me what you are studying, studying.
I'm doing international program, this is studies at the University of Wales.
Oh, it's a good place, that town, isn't it?
Oh, brilliant.
It's just, I have everybody saying how wonderful it is. And students come from all over the country, about from the British Academy. Do you meet any people from other parts of the United Kingdom there?
Well, they are good, well, come and study there, but I think they come so that they can go on to further education through the Swansea University or Cardiff or, well, universities, it'll be here then.
Good. Now, you've got a very interesting hobby here, you like watching the Scarlets.
I'm done every Saturday.
Every Saturday, no, definitely. Well, do you have any other, do you ever have any influence about getting tickets for internationals or something?
Well, it's very difficult, but sometimes I, now my father, he can get these.
Is your father often to venture? It could help, it could help. You love that, Lenny, and also you like swimming and keeping fit generally, what do you do to keep fit?
Well, I live in Turkey, I ski pit class, at least twice a week.
Do you?
Yes, fairly enjoyable and swimming is really good, so enjoy that very much as well.
Well, you look jolly healthy, I was trying to go swimming, I went last week, I never played in more. I've taken away that whole thing and then the lifeguard came, oh, you're a lifeguard chap. But, you know, if I go again, I'll probably do better. If you win this title, you have a fair influence in Mr. National. And if you were to use influence to do anything to improve the town, what would you like to do?
Well, I'd like to see more women being spent on the best portion of themselves, so handicapped, really disabled and perhaps a girl new mates club would be excellent as well.
Thank you, Laura Louise Davis. And the last one of the shortlist to be interviewed is number nineteen, Julie Marley. Julie, you're a shop assistant, tell me what's in shop you assist there?
Just a mini market.
A mini market, just a mini market, I mean, you know, what sort of thing you sell in a mini market?
Everything that somebody has seen from a kit.
There you are, everything, is it out of town or in town?
It's in town.
In, in, well, yeah. You have hobbies which go over, you like eating. You love food, well, you know, you're impressed, I love food, if I love it too much, I start to have that level. You love food, but you also like dancing, that's what keeps you so strong, that's what gives you the energy. Where do you like to go to dance?
Uh, I enjoy a nice light club, but it's, yeah.
Are you still looking for that type?
No, I've found, I think, yeah.
Good. You like to get some slumming in your hands, that's the right, every now and then, yes. But your ambition is to go states, now I don't understand.
I like to, I like to go to the States, I think many people would.
Yes.
It's just a bit embarrassing to say because everybody likes to go. I'd like to see Disneyland and, you know, things like that.
Yes, I'd love to, they've got a new one now in France, haven't they? It wouldn't be quite the same as going to the real Disneyland in the States.
Would you want to get the real Mickey Mouse in the States?
Yes, I'm sure they'll take the Mickey here sometime, but, you know, the real Mickey Mouse, I agree. Now, if you win this title of Mr. National, you would be someone that'll have to listen to what you say. And if you were to have influence, what would you like to suggest as an improvement in your life?
Well, I live in Kew, and we've got a lot of youth in Kew, the youth of the future, and it's not very much for them. There's a fact like this sports centre, something that they can do together to work together.
Well, thank you very much, Julie. Now I have to find out what I do next, I'm sorry, I've completely lost myself, right? This is the instruction here. Come on, what, pardon? One more of you here. I'm so sorry. What am I? I do apologise. I, I'm really apologising, now I care how much I apologise. I'm now called upon number twenty-two, Angela Louise. I'm humbled, humbled, apologies, I really have to say sorry. Angela Louise, now you're a horse trainer, I always expect horse trainers to be, um, ever. Oh, you're looking fantastic, tell me about your horse training.
I breed chicken ponies and wedge cocks. Um, so we show a lot, all of the technology, we're in the town, we're doing quite a lot as well.
Do you?
And to be quite honest, last week I saw two horses, but two chicken ponies, which I think is, you know, quite a achievement anyway.
So you obviously buy horses and...
Yes, we do, yes.
You break them in and that sort of thing?
No, no, it's just, just show them and break them.
And does that, when you win this prize, does the National get to mention?
It does, yes, yes.
So it's a good time for the town.
Yes, it is, yes.
Very, very good. And your ambition is to keep being successful in shales, and it sounds very untrendly, well, okay. Now, if you are successful in becoming Mr. National and you're voiceful, we listen to and show by the way to the paper, what improvements have anyone you like to recommend for the town?
Well, I just wish they added a bit of maturity to it.
Well, I'm looking back now, this list of instructions, well, he's a taskmaster, that two things, right? All the things I've got to do here, now let's take, after girls have left. Um, now, what I'm going to do is to call all the girls back on stage, if I may, to give the judges a chance to have one more look at them. So number one is Nikki Lee. Number six, Pauline Watworth. Number eight, Linda Cunningham. Number eleven, Claire Evans. Number thirteen, Mary Sharon. Number fourteen, Tracy Marie Mayland. Number seventeen, Laura Louise Davis. Number nineteen, Julie Marley. And number twenty-two, Angela Louise Davis. And I'm now going to ask the judges to retire, to decide who will be this year's Mr. National. But in the meanwhile, please, lovely ladies, many thanks. Now, folks, the next bit is easy for me, big welcome back to Captain Q and his music.
Long it takes.
She said trust in the good times, no matter how long it takes. You can't tell your love. No, you just have to wait. She said love don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. You can't tell your love. No, you just have to wait. She said trust in the good times, no matter how long it takes. Thank you. Thank you very much. I've always wanted to do that. The most of the lady. Tell the band, Julie, I've got to do that. Right then. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, this next one is a Cliff number. I'll read it. It's it, it's Jeff. This time, Please Number?
Yes. Hello, number one. One that most people love and enjoy. It's called Every Breath You Take.
Every breath you take, every move you make, every run you make, every step you take, I'll be watching you. Every single day, every word you say, every game you play, every night you stay, I'll be watching you. Oh, can't you see? You belong to me. I'm a fool, heartaches, every step you take, every move you make, every vow you break, every smile you fake, every prayer you say, I'll be watching you. Since you've gone, I've been lost without a trace. I dream and I can only see your face. I look around, but I do, I dare replace. I feel so cold and alone below and face. I keep crying, baby, baby. Thank you, thank you very much. This is the Cliff number for you. We don't talk anymore. I used to think life was sweet. Used to think we were so complete. I can't believe you're throwing away. Used to feel we had it made. Used to feel we could sail away. Can you imagine how I feel today? When it seems a long time ago, you were the only one. Now it comes to letting you know, you are the only one. Remember what you done. Oh, it's so funny how we don't talk anymore. It's so funny how we don't talk anymore. And I ain't good to sleep. No, no, I ain't kind of sheep. It's so funny how we don't talk anymore. We don't talk anymore. Well, it really doesn't matter to me. I guess you're leaving, it's bad to be. It's time to you now, you wanna be free. When I hope you know which way to go, you're on your own again. 'Cause now it comes to letting go, you are the only one. Remember what you done. Yeah, it's so funny how we don't talk anymore. It's so funny how we don't talk anymore. And I ain't good to sleep. No, no, I ain't kind of sheep. It's so funny how we don't talk anymore. We don't talk anymore. I ain't good to sleep. No, no, I ain't kind of sheep. It's so funny how we don't talk anymore. We don't talk anymore. No, 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 no. We don't talk anymore.
There we are, very clever show. Time for Jeff to introduce the next number.
Yes, thank you very much. Wasn't that great, eh? Thanks very much. This next song is a very, very old song. It's a nice slow one. Taking all this, kind of, totally loved ones. Simple Sherman song, again, and a great TV series movie, I think. I'm not as good-looking as her, but I'll try, yeah. This is Blue Moon. You saw me standing alone, without a dream in my heart, without a love of my own. Blue Moon, you're just what I was there for. You heard me saying you'd prefer, someone I could care for. And then the sun appeared before me, the only one my heart's ever known. I heard somebody whisper, "Please, don't leave." And when I looked, the moon had turned to gold. Blue Moon, now I'm no longer alone, without a dream in my heart, without a love of my own. And then the sun appeared before me, the only one my heart's ever known. I heard somebody whisper, "Please, don't leave." And when I looked, the moon had turned to gold. Yeah, Blue Moon, now I'm no longer alone, without a dream in my heart, without a love of mine. Oh. Thank you, thank you very much.
Any new diamond fans? Nobody? Never mind.
Where we're here, I can begin to move, but then I know it's going strong. It was in the spring, when the spring became a summer. Would I believe that you came along? touching hands, reaching out, touching me and touching you. Well, I'm sweet Caroline, 'cause times never seemed so good. Well, I'm feeling fine, to believe they never would. But now I look to the night and it doesn't seem so clear. We've let up where we belong to. And when I heard everyone's on my shoulder, how can I hurt when I'm only you? Warm, touching warm, reaching out, touching me, touching you. I said, "Sweet Caroline", 'cause times never seemed so good. I said, "I'm feeling fine", to believe they never would. No, no, no.
Everybody, why, everybody sing. You know the blues. Come on, all together. Yeah, I said, "Sweet Caroline", 'cause times never seemed so good. Yeah, now I'm feeling fine, to believe they never would. Thank you. Thanks very much. I think they're ready. The judges have done their best. We're ready for all. Thanks very much indeed. Good night. I mean, almost got to the point where the results will be here. So I'm now going to ask the theatre manager, Joe Phillips, to bring their worshippers, the mayor and mayoress of the borough, Kneffy, councillor Mrs. Ben McDonagh, to the stage, the editor of Kneffy Star, Mr. Spencer Feely, Miss Kneffy nineteen eighty-nine, Miss Louise Hodges. And they will make their presentations. I still haven't got the results in my hand. But I would like to now to take just this few moments to pay some thanks to all those who took part, to all the girls who took part. It's absolutely wonderful turnout today. To Ina Taylor, for the excellent way in which she presented the girls, to Captain Q and his music, in particular to Jeff and Andy. To the Kneffy Star and their advertisers for their sponsorship. And to John Barrington, who was the theatre's assistant manager who designed this wonderful set. To the Witsy Weta on television, wherever. To Alan Lewis Davis, a stage manager, to Keith Elms on the lights, David Hurford on the sound. Not forgetting the two Alans and Ian up there. So now I'm looking for the results being brought to me by the scrutineer, Joe Phillips. And I will now read these out in reverse order, the way that they were told. And so, in third position this evening in the Mr. Nethley contest, number three is number eleven, Claire Evans. Now, we've seen we have checked her for fifty pounds from the editor of the paper, Mr. Spencer Feely. In second position, number fourteen, Tracy Marie Maynard. Now Tracy will be receiving her cheque for one hundred pounds. And the winner tonight, who will become Mr. Nethley, but she'll be also going to Paris to receive a cheque for two hundred pounds and all these other marvellous prizes, is number twenty-two, Angela Louise Davis. It's been a wonderful evening, ladies and gentlemen. You've been a marvelous audience. I don't know whether Mr. Taylor wishes to say a couple of words or if you feel that we should just not.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the theatre manager for inviting us here tonight. We've had a lovely evening. And I'd like to see more of this. The theatre is absolutely full. I'd like to see this every, every week. I've been saying for many years now that we've got lovelier girls in Sanacy than we've got anywhere in Britain. Um, I've been saying for many years now that we've got lovely girls in Tennessee and we've got anywhere in Britain. And ladies and gentlemen, after seeing you tonight, I think I was right in thinking that way. Now, of course, every one of them were lovely, they all deserved a prize, but of course, a very fine and lovely winner. There's only, can only be one winner, the judges had a very hard job tonight. They picked this lady and she's a very worthy winner. Now, before we leave this theatre tonight, I think it's appropriate that we should sing our own national anthem, Hail Blarman Adai.
...